Welcome to Special Session Three of the Shangri-La Dialogue, Myanmar: Opportunities for Diplomacy Amid Different Visions for Peace. My name is Aaron Connolly, Senior Fellow at the IIS for Southeast Asian Politics and Foreign Policy. Since the army launched a coup d'etat in Myanmar three years ago, levels of violence in Myanmar have soared. An unknown number have been killed, but it is certainly in the tens of thousands. An estimated 3 million are internally displaced. Many more remain, families destroyed. Following defeats over the last six months, the military controls less of the country than at any point since the early days after independence from Great Britain. Recent violence in Rakhine State over the past six weeks raised the specter of a return to communal violence there in a place that has seen far too much of it in recent years. The IIS has long taken an interest in events in Myanmar, including at the Shangri-La Dialogue. Six years ago in this room, we held a special session on the atrocities in Rakhine State. Then in 2022, we convened again in this room to discuss what we called “the way forward” in Myanmar at a time when the conflict there appeared to be still limited in nature. In the intervening two years, the conflict has deepened and spread. All of us in this region and around the world want to see it end, but there are different views on how this can best be achieved. Some see the military as a necessary part of any solution. Others ask whether a post-military, federal future might be more stable. This year, we have convened this special session panel to discuss “Opportunities for Diplomacy Amid These Different Visions for Peace.” Shortly, I will turn to four diplomats with responsibility for working towards a resolution of the conflict: Emery Trevellian, the Minister for the Indo-Pacific at the Foreign Office in the United Kingdom; Rajanor Sherwan, the Director General of the National Security Council in Malaysia; Igor Gismanz, the Special Envoy for Myanmar of the European Union; and Patnora Swajaya, the Head of the Office of the Special Envoy to Myanmar of Indonesia. There are no representatives of Myanmar on this panel because speaking roles at the Shangri-La Dialogue are reserved for government officials and the identity of the legitimate government of Myanmar is still in dispute. But we have several eminent scholars of Myanmar origin around the table, and we will hear from them later this afternoon. I will now invite each of our four panelists to offer five minutes of remarks before I open the floor up to questions, and I’ll turn first to Minister Trevellian.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you, IIS, for bringing us together. For the UK, working to secure a safe, free, prosperous Indo-Pacific is a priority and addressing the crisis in Myanmar is central to that, and there is a long road ahead. Just last month, humanitarian workers gave me an insight into the challenges that they face in their efforts to provide lifesaving support to the people in Rakhine State. Let’s be clear: by forcing hospitals to close, the military is denying Rakhine and Rohingya communities access to healthcare, including pregnant women. Across the country, over 18 million people require emergency assistance, and with around 13 million people now facing food insecurity, parents are going hungry so that their children can eat. And I could go on, and I know that you would all have stories similar to recount. In short, this is an emergency, and we need to keep this on the international, political, and humanitarian agendas if we are to secure the peaceful future the people of Myanmar deserve and need. Of course, this is far from straightforward, yet we can draw on our shared experience paving paths away from violence and towards peace around the world. First, we know that if a solution to the conflict is to endure, it must come from the people of Myanmar themselves. Many of those with whom I speak point to a federal future, but whatever one’s vision, we seem to agree that a sustainable settlement will be one in which all ethnic groups, religions, and minorities are included and feel safe, respected, and equal, including the Rohingya, Myanmar’s women, and the young people who will take it forwards. Second, we must support the conditions needed for such a process. The UK continues to use its role on the UN Security Council to shine a light on violations of human rights and to maintain pressure on the military. The wider multilateral system, of course, has a role to play, bolstering the efforts of ASEAN and its Special Envoy Alu Kono Kitihoon, and I welcome the new UN Special Envoy for Myanmar, Julie Bishop, and encourage refreshed leadership and coordination between the UN and ASEAN. As a committed ASEAN dialogue partner, the UK is helping to rally the international community behind ASEAN’s Five-Point Consensus and its call for an end to all violence and dialogue between all parties. Third, conditions for a successful dialogue must include de-escalation. Sadly, we are seeing civilians beset by abhorrent acts of violence, including airstrikes, shelling, and arson targeted at villages, homes, schools, and hospitals. Recent attacks in Myanmar and Myanmar-Jayan, townships have seen a further tragic loss of innocent lives. So we call on all parties, especially the military regime, to ensure that they are prioritizing the protection of civilians. We must break the culture of impunity as well so that those inflicting suffering on civilians are held to account. Lastly, I want to underline how important it is that we continue to support those who bear the brunt of all this day in, day out. And last year, the UK was able to provide £42 million to meet essential needs, strengthening local organizations and supporting the most vulnerable communities, including those in Rakhine. This brings total UK assistance to £150 million for humanitarian assistance, emergency healthcare, and other crucial support since 2021, and we hope this will encourage others to continue their support. Ultimately, there is every reason why we can create the conditions in which a peaceful, stable Myanmar is possible, and it’s time to redouble our efforts to bring this about. Thank you.
Thank you, Minister. Dato’ Rajanor Sherwan. Floor is yours.
Thank you very much, excellencies, ladies and gentlemen. Hope is the currency and the basis of all diplomacy, which constitutes a part of our theme today. I, for one, am hearted that despite the extremely dire situation in Myanmar, the title of today’s session is Myanmar: Opportunities for Diplomacy and Different Visions of Peace. It’s a hopeful one. As they say, it is darkest before dawn. As we retain hope, we must also recognize realities. I use the term “realities” in the plural and not the singular. Complex problems such as the situation in Myanmar seldom has one reality. The first reality is the situation on the ground, further subdivided into the current and the potential. Many of you are better informed than I about the current reality on the ground in Myanmar. Morgan Michaels has written an excellent background note, and Aaron has given a good summary, so I need not go into detail here. Instead, I’ll focus on the reality on the ground in Malaysia. There, there is a strong feeling that the coup d’etat in 2021 is taking up valuable bandwidth from ASEAN’s region-building efforts at a time of great challenge and opportunity. That is why a year ago, Prime Minister Ano Ibrahim stated that, and I quote, “Myanmar should be carved out for now,” unquote. Indeed, this sentiment is widespread amongst Malaysian policymakers. Having spent so much attention to facilitating Myanmar’s entry into ASEAN and its democratic transition, it is extremely frustrating to revisit this issue again and again and again. It is only our commitment to the ideal of an ASEAN ten and the welfare of the people of Myanmar that motivates our active involvement. To now turn to a potential reality, namely the worst-case scenario, which is this: a situation like Syria more than a decade ago in which the central power is in control of only the capital and a few garrison towns, which we are seeing today: massive outflows of the population into neighboring countries. I note that Myanmar’s population is close to 55 million people. In contrast, Syria only has 22 million people, and Afghanistan 41 million. At present, there are upwards of 200,000 refugees from Myanmar in Malaysia. As a result of this large number, public sympathy for them has fallen drastically to the extent that this is now a factor in some by-elections recently held. Continuous conflict even after the fall of the central power owing to conflict amongst groups who are presently ostensibly allied with one another in one way or the other; intervention by its neighbors whose aims in Myanmar are opposed to one another; and lastly, an effective breakup of the country into smaller units, each hostile to one another. The second reality is that of power. Changes in the junta’s behavior will occur only when they perceive a change in the power relations between it and those opposed to them, and a calibration of the means for them to stay in power, which we have seen in the past. This calibration is in turn influenced by countries which have a state in Myanmar, many of which have power, influence, and interests of their own. The third reality is that of history. Obviously, Myanmar’s colonial and post-colonial history has been violent and complex and informs many of today’s realities. Any vision of peace must clearly take into account this fact. Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, in light of the nightmare scenario that I described earlier, all countries have a stake in ensuring that the situation is resolved expeditiously. For this reason, we all have an interest in working closely together. In other words, all countries involved in Myanmar have some measure of power. The trick is to harness this power into achieving a common objective. I would like to offer a few ideas in this regard. Firstly, there is a perception that different members of ASEAN have different approaches in dealing with this issue. Some advocate deeper engagement with junta, others prefer to keep them isolated. Frankly, I believe that these are not mutually exclusive events. Indeed, having different types of approaches provides wider options for ASEAN as a whole and may even promote creativity. The point is to coordinate and to have a solid commitment to ASEAN’s Five-Point Consensus. Secondly, there are very many special envoys on Myanmar. I count at least six or seven. They must work and coordinate closely. If the international community as a whole believes that ASEAN Five-Point Consensus is the basis to resolve this conflict, their overall effort must reflect this in both word and deed. And thirdly, the power relations between the ethnic armed organizations, EAOs, and the people’s defense forces will remain fluid. In light of this, focus should be given to promoting principles and not groups and personalities. If outside powers intervene to support one or more groups, the conflict will most certainly prolong. This will be to the detriment of all within and outside Myanmar. In the end, the problem in Myanmar is ultimately for the people of Myanmar to resolve themselves. To believe otherwise is to live in a fool’s paradise. But what we can do is to help create the right conditions to enable all parties in Myanmar to achieve peace expeditiously, which will then be the basis of progress and prosperity. I wish to assure our friends in Myanmar that as you find your rightful place in the world, Malaysia will always stand by you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dato. Now turn to Ambassador Igor Gismanz. We’ve heard from the penholder at the Security Council in the UK and the future Chair of ASEAN. The EU has taken a very active role on Myanmar over the last three years, and you’ve been a big part of that, Ambassador, so very keen to hear from you.
Thank you very much, Aaron, also for bringing us together today. Ladies and gentlemen, excellencies, the objectives of the European Union in Myanmar since the coup have been very clear. We have to help the country to return to its path towards democracy, and we have to support the people of Myanmar. So we’ve basically followed a double-track approach to pressure the junta to change its behavior, condemning in its strongest possible terms the violence that the military regime perpetuates against its own people. So we’ve issued eight rounds of sanctions against those perpetrators as well as to entities financing the military. Let me underline that those sanctions are targeted to avoid harming civilians. We also have an arms embargo in place as well as an export ban on dual goods. In parallel to that, we have been putting in place a number of instruments to alleviate the people’s critical needs. And between 2021 and 2023, we committed more than €180 million to development aid as well as €85 million in humanitarian aid. All of that, I stress, channeled to international organizations or non-governmental organizations, including many national ones, and reaching all parts of the country. We will continue to follow that dual track, but like many others for sure, we have to acknowledge that these actions alone will not have a decisive influence on the course of the conflict. And like many other partners do, including here at this table, we are deeply concerned that there is no much progress on the Five-Point Consensus. Violence has not ceased, on the contrary, and we are far away from a constructive dialogue among all parties. I think it’s fair to say that the junta has been unwilling to implement the Five-Point Consensus in earnest, a consensus that we all subscribe to. On the battlefield, since October 2023, the military has suffered a series of setbacks: losing territory, bases, and towns to ethnic armed organizations along the country’s periphery, and it’s no longer in control of large part of its own borders. And if the current trajectory continues, various ethnic groups will tighten their grip on autonomous statelets in the periphery, while for now at least, the weakened military in a very brutal way manages to control the center. The military is continuing to target civilians, ordinary citizens, villages throughout the country. And as we speak, and the minister spoke about it, we see other layers of complexity in Rakhine following the forced recruitment of Rohingya, dividing communities, and exploiting tensions and mistrust fueled by misinformation, fueled by hate speech. So how can we, international partners, create a more conducive environment to overcome this escalation and adjust to this new environment which we see in Myanmar? What more can we do, or rather, what can we do differently? Let me maybe offer four points, and they’re more of method rather than anything else. Firstly, any process, any mediation has to be inclusive. We’ve seen it over the last couple of months, but I dare say over the last couple of decades, that partial solutions, partial ceasefires also will not hold. They only feed more distrust. So we need to engage all stakeholders, and let me praise the Indonesian chairmanship last year for having started such a process. And we do hope that Laos will take this forward because it’s absolutely critical. Secondly, trust. I know it sounds a bit alien at this particular juncture to speak about trust, but we need some basic trust between the different parties to come to a solution but also to make sure that solution will prove sustainable. So we will put our shoulders under any initiative that leads to more confidence building between different parties. Thirdly, in this sense, I echo what our Malaysian colleague has said. We need to create more space where regional, international partners talk among themselves. Aaron, you said there is different visions of peace. That is, of course, true to a certain extent, but there’s also many things that we share as international community. And of course, there is huge, and it’s on display here these days, international competition and geopolitical rivalry. But as it comes to Myanmar, we all want peace, we all want stability, and we all want to avoid fragmentation of the country. So we need to try and bridge the differences that do exist among ourselves, and we can only do so if we speak more to each other also collectively as partners of Myanmar, and I’m afraid we don’t do enough of that. But fourthly, and finally, and thereto, I join the previous speakers. As much as we can help from the outside, it will be national stakeholders that will define themselves, concrete solution that will satisfy the aspirations of the people. And we see local initiatives towards state-building and ethnic-inclusive federalism that accommodates those aspirations and that do deserve our support. Again, no one wants to see fragmentation of the country, but we need to take account of these aspirations of all sub-national units and engage them as such. So I’ll end it here. I know there is many crises ongoing around the world that also deserve our attention, but it’s good that we have this conversation today and it’s good that we renew our thinking as international partners for the sake of the people of Myanmar, but also frankly for our own sake. And the EU is ready to do its part. Thank you.
Thank you, Ambassador. We heard praise earlier, both in the launch of the Asia-Pacific Regional Security Assessment and just now from Ambassador Gismanz for Indonesia’s creative approach to engaging all stakeholders during its chairmanship last year. And so, very pleased to be able to have Ambassador Noura Swajaya in from Bern to share with us about Indonesia’s experience. Ambassador?
Thank you, Aaron. Thank you for the last-minute invitation. And certainly, you know, if Aaron is asking, of course, we are working very closely last year during our chairmanship, so it’s difficult to resist. So let me just briefly, in this five-minute presentation. Of course, we need to also understand the historical perspective. You know, we were, like Rajan mentioned earlier, we should not be dealing with this again and again and again. So I thought that when I was a junior diplomat, so I was witnessing at that time, I was already ambassador to ASEAN, in 2011, when the ASEAN Summit in Bali, under the Indonesian chairmanship, finally allowing Myanmar to become the Chair of ASEAN in 2014 because of the roadmap to democracy implementation, despite criticism as well. You know, then finally, we thought that we will leave it to them because this has already been, you know, democratic, has already been implementing. The people talk about quasi-democracy, and of course, we are expecting that there will be reconciliation process, which is, you know, very, you know, in that reconciliation process happening. But then, of course, it was then 2021, we see this coup again. So that was, you know, just to give a perspective. When we are engaging on this issue before, Indonesia and ASEAN at the time was, we remember constructive engagement. So we are engaging the junta at that time. We did not engage the other stakeholders. And we were criticized as well. But the way we engage the junta, of course, they said that they have a roadmap to democracy they would like to implement, so we would like to help them to implement the roadmap to democracy. It took us, I think, almost 30 years during the previous junta. Then finally, you know, we see democratization taking place despite some constraint here and there. And of course, they are finally chairing ASEAN in 2014. But I heard that the reconciliation process is not happening. Then, of course, since the junta happened in 2021, then we go back to square one. So when we see that, of course, then we are in Indonesia thinking very, you know, deeply. Then finally, the innovative strategy that Igor mentioned earlier, I think that we need to talk also to all of the stakeholders. And that was the reason why we are engaging all of the stakeholders, you know, in very intensive conversations. It was, from the beginning, it was very difficult because trust was not there. You know, even when we are talking about dialogue, they said, “What do you mean by dialogue? There is no dialogue.” I mean, you know, every time they have dialogue, every time they have peace agreement, immediately after the peace agreement agreed, then it was breaking, I know, broken again. So to tell them, you know, and even we are telling them some of the, we are not saying that it should go that way, but we give them example like the Cambodian peace process, for example. It was started with the, we call it cocktail party at that time. Finally, it was replaced to Jakarta and formal meeting. Then finally, all parties are meeting, and finally, we see peace happening in Cambodia. So that was the historical perspective that we need to also understand. And that is the reason why I think what we need to have now is really comprehensive solutions that should include inclusive dialogue involving all of them. But when we are talking about inclusive dialogue, it is very difficult to bring all parties together because at least in terms of groupings, there are five major groupings inside, but they are not necessarily agreeing between one another. So when we are engaging with all of the stakeholders, we also told the Myanmar military that they are also stakeholders as institutions. So we are engaging with them to try to find how we are going to solve the solution in a comprehensive manner. So in our conversation with all of them, I think all of the stakeholders, we have already a conversation with, if not in person, at least virtually, because some of them, we cannot meet them in person. It is very difficult. But I think the message that we receive from them is, of course, they believe in dialogue. They believe in political solution. They don’t believe in the military solutions. There will be no military solution. So when we see the situation now as compared to the previous junta, I think what is happening in terms of the conflict is unprecedented. So unprecedented in terms of the escalation, in terms of how the resistant group can organize among themselves, but they are only organizing in terms of military strategy on the ground. But they never talk about the political, you know, solution among them. So this is still, you know, it’s not there. And I think that is the reason why I think we are very much pushing for the implementation of the Five-Point of Consensus. People always criticize ASEAN because of the Five-Point of Consensus. This is a consensus that agreed by all. If one party is not implementing that, so it is not the ASEAN problem. And I think, I was talking about the reconciliation that was not happening before. I think this is, again, the solution should be in the hand of the people of Myanmar. So, yeah, okay, one minute to conclude, Aaron. So I think, you know, what we need to underline through this discussion here is that we need to keep on international unity to address this. Well, we know that people are visiting Nepal, and we know the same person visiting Nepal, but international community unity is reflected in the unprecedented United Nations Security Council resolutions. We need to keep that. And we need to also bring this to the international community because, of course, we are so preoccupied now with the biggest conflict that is happening. So nobody is talking about this. And I think, as a penholder of the UN Security Council on this issue, we are also discussing with the UK very closely on how we will be able to have another successful UN Security Council resolution as what we had before. Number two, I think, you know, ASEAN alone, without the participation of all of the stakeholders, it is not possible to resolve that. So I think this is not the problem of ASEAN. ASEAN has already been trying. We have been trying before for 30 years. We are willing to try again because we know the implication will be to the region. The third is, of course, I think we see personally, I see the momentum to push for inclusive dialogue because no one is winning on the ground. Everybody claiming they are making advances, you know. So then, you know, they are perhaps waiting for really a genuine effort, but it should not be publicized. It should be confidential. We should work, I’ve been working on this last year. I was criticized. You know, confidentiality, is it, you are not doing anything? Then you keep it confidential? No, no, we did a lot already. So I think there is a momentum to push for inclusive dialogue. And the engagement, we should be proactive. We cannot wait. We should be proactive. We keep on communicating with all of the parties. So with that, I hope there is always a light at the end of the tunnel. Thank you.
Thank you, Patnora. We'll open the floor up to questions shortly. So just a reminder, if you wish to ask the panel a question or make an intervention, feel free to make sure that you've inserted your name card into the console and then feel free to press speak and you will begin to show up on my screen. So I'll go first to Woo Yim in from the Center for Humanitarian Dialogue. Your microphone is on.
Thanks very much, Aaron, and also to the distinguished panelists. Think Ambassador Nora, you highlighted in those words, international unity, right? We need that. And also, Dato Raja, you highlighted that the regional international community needs to work and coordinate closely in both word and deed. As we already know, the neighboring states of Myanmar is also already grappling with the spillover effects of conflict. So my question would be, how can the international community create a more conducive regional environment for de-escalation and peace? You know, on the point of humanitarian assistance, it has been highlighted that the needs are immense and houses are being burned. Where are the people going to go? So just one question here would be, how do you see humanitarian assistance delivery so they can actually reach all the people in need? Thanks.
So Minister Trelleian, would you like to take that, especially on humanitarian assistance and dialogue?
Absolutely. I think the great challenge around the humanitarian access has been one that all those actors who want to be able to at least provide support to keep everyone, you know, tempted to be fed, clean water, hospital care, is finding ways to get it there safely and know that it's well-used. And using local partners, we have found certainly is one way to help us do that, working in concert with UN organizations and others. And it is a long-term commitment that I think many of us across the international community have made to continue to do that. But I think so, we have obviously supporters, as I've said, particularly in Rakhine State, but we're also supporting the Magadese government in their very generous hosting of now nearly 1.2 million Rohingya refugees in Coxas Bazaar in southern Bangladesh, one of, of course, many places where around the world, neighboring countries have taken on this incredibly generous act of looking after a displaced population. But again, this is an enormous population, very cramped conditions, really difficult situation, you know, 30,000 new babies a year. At the moment, not much chance of any sight of the ability for them to go home to a dignified and safe return. So again, humanitarian support, to support those other countries around Myanmar who are looking after and providing safe haven for those people who will one day absolutely want to go home. But the complexity of getting that humanitarian aid in consistently, making sure it reaches those who need it most, is very difficult. And there is an incredibly complex network run by amazing diplomats, volunteers on the ground, neighboring countries who do their best to support as we go through. But the challenge is, is exactly as you say, to find a way to bring a table around which all parties can sit, whether that is indeed the international community in the broader sense, whether it will be perhaps one, one group of, you know, leading voices, I think, ASEAN ones who can get everyone around the table. But the, I think, and we've all said it, the only way we can see a way through is if all those voices are around that table. So that's going to be the critical challenge.
Dato?
Thank you. I'll try to answer the second question by saying this. If I had a real answer to the question, I'll be a much wiser and richer man than I am right now because there's no easy solution to it. Obviously, as all agree that the solution for Myanmar lies in the hands of the people of Myanmar, but regional players do have a role to play. And as I mentioned earlier on, and which I think was also emphasized very strongly by Pakmura as well, is that there are a lot of players outside there and increasingly becoming a crowded field. And there's a term for it, obviously, you know, this Yim in, it's called forum shopping after serving years and years in multilateral fora. So there needs to be, to me, there needs to be a platform, as Anne-Marie rightly mentioned, a platform for bringing all of the players together, all the regional and international players together, so that you can coordinate positions and the messaging to all the players in Myanmar as well. And I'm sure Pakmura will have more things to say about this because he's dealt directly with these issues. But if the international community has placed trust and responsibility on the shoulders of ASEAN, then obviously, the members of ASEAN and the organization needs to step up, including pulling everybody together, all the special envoys together, around a common game plan, which is ASEAN five-point consensus. Now, to be clear, we have to be realistic about this. You know, great powers, they have great interests. And obviously, the bigger countries in the region, neighboring Myanmar, China, India, et cetera, probably have interests in Myanmar. And I don't think that these interests necessarily are opposed to one another, but nonetheless, we need to make sure that they are fused together and moving in the same, in the same direction and at the same, and at the same pace and with a common messaging to all players in Myanmar. So to me, if you're looking at forming a regional consensus or international consensus and the responsibility has been given to ASEAN by the international community, obviously, ASEAN needs to take, needs to take the leading role. But nonetheless, as I mentioned, I have not dealt with these issues on a day-to-day basis and as Pakmura has, so I'm going to be shameless in asking probably him to comment on this. Thank you.
Let's go straight to Patnora then.
No, I think we have a very good capital in term of uniting the international community. We have five-point consensus. Nobody is objecting that, international community. We have ASEAN role. Nobody is objecting that, you know, when in our conversation with all of the international community, they said that they support ASEAN, but certainly, of course, you know, the other parties in Myanmar is not yet engaging. So there is no disagreement among the international community. So we hope that there will be another UN Security Council resolutions, but of course, the situation now is difficult. But of course, we need to work very closely with all partners here. We also, last year, for the first time, organized a meeting of the special envoy. So we bring all of the special envoy, also the last UN special envoy. Now, the UN special envoy is just, you know, appointed. We hope that there will be soon and we are willing to organize that if there's a need to do that in Jakarta or in Bali. I think our minister is, you know, very keen. So I think this is also something that, you know, very important to exchange note among the, you know, special envoy, not only special envoy, because not all of, we have our colleague from India, who is, you know, responsible for this issue. So she was also in Jakarta. So we are coordinating what international community that we need to do. So certainly, it's not easy, but we have a big capital in order to maintain that and to push that further. I forgot to mention before about the humanitarian assistance. I think one of the five-point consensus in, on humanitarian assistance. So I think we, despite the challenges, we are managed to not much delivering humanitarian assistance to the IDPs. Of course, we have to work with our military junta, but we need to make sure that humanitarian assistance should not be politicized for political purposes by any parties. And we did that a small amount. I think Thailand tried to do that this year for transboundary humanitarian assistance. This is very important. So we need to do it correctly. We need to do it right because without that, everything has to be flown to Yangon, then there's no way for you not to collaborate with the military. So if there is cross-border humanitarian assistance, this will certainly help the IDPs. And Indonesia, bilaterally, we also providing our assistance in term of food. We are able to deliver with the AHA Center food assistance to the, even to the area, which is heavily a conflict area like in Magwe and also in Saginaw. So we need to really pay attention to this. And of course, again, international community, global divide is very difficult, resources is very scarce and people need that, they need urgently. I think we are going also to have a discussion with your colleague on this aspect later on in Geneva. Thank you.
Ambassador Dris Mans, I wonder if you could answer some of those questions and comment on what's been said, but also I wonder if you think that, as Patnora says, no one disagrees with the ASEAN five-point consensus, but does the international community need to go beyond the ASEAN five-point consensus?
Well, I mean, I think if one had a blank paper today, what would you say? We have to stop fighting? We have to give humanitarian aid? And we have to engage all stakeholders? That's the five-point consensus. So I don't need, I don't think we need to spend much time in rewriting the five-point consensus, my personal view. It is there. Everybody signed up to it, which is in itself rather precious. It's just about elaborating on a roadmap to actually implement it. And especially, the junta has done its utter best not to do so. But allow me just to pick up on the humanitarian side. I think we need two things. One, we need more money. We need much, much, much more money. The humanitarian crisis in Myanmar is absolutely real. Unfortunately, there is not a lot of cameras, there's not a lot of journalists, but what's happening today, be it in Rakhine or any other part of Myanmar, is an absolute disaster. The UNHCR calculate there might be up to 200,000 IDPs in Rakhine trying to flee very soon. These are huge, huge numbers. So we need everybody to basically pitch in and contribute much, much more. Secondly, maybe we need to have another conversation about humanitarian principles because I think many people don't really get what humanitarian principles are, how to respect the neutrality of humanitarian actors. We have huge issues with everybody trying to politicize the regime in the first place, humanitarian aid, while if the basic principle is just to entrust local organizations to deliver that aid, nobody should interfere with that, with that process. And I think it's only by doing so that we can create the trust that humanitarian actors need to do their job. But I'm afraid that kind of the basic principles of that are still very much misunderstood.
Aaron? Take a series of interventions in order now, and I'll go first to Ning Neng Tan Ang.
Good afternoon and thank you for all your insightful comments and information. What I understand is like the current engagement from ASEAN, Thailand, China and the EU and the other, the Western Bloc is based on trying to engage with both sides and also based on the humanitarian and political ground. But meanwhile, since the early 2023, the junta has an increased engagement with the Middle Eastern countries like Qatar, Saudi Arabia, UAE, and also the South Asian countries like Pakistan and Sri Lanka, while keeping the significant economic engagement with countries like Taiwan, South Korea and Japan. So my question is, how do you perceive the evolving dynamics of international involvement, like economically involvement in Myanmar, in the Myanmar crisis? And what kind of strategy can be implemented to ensure a coordinated and effective approach, taking into account the interest of all stakeholders? Thank you.
Thank you, Ning Neng Tan Ang. And we'll go next to you, Jun Lee Lee An San.
Thank you so much for the opportunity for questions. And my question will go directly to the UK and the EU. And then finally, also allow me to give my thoughts a little bit on ASEAN, not less than, not more than one minute. So there is two gaps in Myanmar. One is from the opposition side, one is from the international side, which I see is that from the opposition, the Myanmar opposition, which is, there is a missing point in giving uniform message from the, to the international community. But recently, the opposition groups are working together in which the joint statement between the NUG and the K2C was also one significant, which they are trying to give uniform message to international community for the future Myanmar. And there is also another missing point from the international side, which is there is a missing link between the international actors in terms of response and coordination. There are countries who are actively engaged with all stakeholders and there are countries who are very cautious about engagement with the non-stakeholders. And there are countries which we cannot mention the country of the name, but who are, who see the centrality of SAC, the junta, or the main point of resolving the problem, which is not a problem when we push the SAC to step down from the political platform. But when we see the SAC or the junta as a central only for the solution, which may not be missing. And when I would like to point out the rule of ASEAN is that, so it's true that it's not the ASEAN problem when parties concerned from the Myanmar side fail to comply with the five-point consensus. And there is also things to consider from the ASEAN side, which is consistency. Indonesia did a very good job and we are very hopeful that there will be continuity from this new ASEAN chair and the next Malaysia as well. So I would like to also raise to our leaders from ASEAN that is there any new way of, of course, Troyga is a very good initiative, but is there any way to make it reality in a more consistent way when it comes to engagement with all stakeholders? Thank you.
And next go to Mamot Uza.
Am I on? Okay. Thank you very much, Aaron. Good afternoon, everyone. And first of all, I'd like to express my appreciation to double I double S for organizing this special session and a special note of appreciation to all the ambassadors, honorable ministers present on the panel who have shared such important insights. I think it's very encouraging to hear three years and counting into the crisis since 2021, that there is this even more growing recognition about the need for better coordination among all the international stakeholders. And I think giving more effect to the notion of ASEAN centrality, particularly as the broad priorities of the five-point consensus, as Ambassador Drisman has mentioned. I mean, nobody can quibble with that, but how do we implement that? So Aaron, please forgive me, I'll take a couple of minutes. I have four points, four observations to make and questions linked to that. So the first observation, I have taken note of all the insights that the panel has shared. Let me add one more observation. I think, of course, we're all around the table, we're very much familiar with a new order to regional diplomacy and, of course, prioritizing dialogue, talking across the table rather than killing each other on the battlefields or on the streets. But I think one of the realities that you've all discussed, there's one more. The subtleties of geopolitics and regional diplomacy bypass, are passed by the people on the ground whose houses have been burned, whose family members have been killed. And for them, I think they have a very different, I think, view or vision of external intervention. So I think that's something that all of our, all of us who are looking in, seeking to help the Myanmar people also need to bear in mind in coming up with how we all coordinate. And that's my second point. How shall we all coordinate? I welcome very much the pronouncements and sentiments expressed for a coordinated approach. But I'd also like to bring here the findings of the ICS Yusufiyshak Institute's annual State of Southeast Asia survey, where the preference in the region is more for talking, engaging in independent dialogue with all stakeholders to build trust. But the appetite for an internationally coordinated approach seems to have lessened over the three years that we've been trying to track that. So I think, I think this is where the suggestions that all the panelists have made on bringing those two together, internationally coordinating around the need internationally coordinating around the need to talk to the different stakeholders based on each of our individual strengths, expertises, and communications channels is something that I think we can all think, think more about in detail, how we can go about it. Which brings me to the third point, because if we have different communication channels, if we have different interlocutors among the many stakeholders in Myanmar, there are many Myanmars, as you've all observed, there's Myanmar in Nepido, there's Myanmar in the urban areas and countryside outside of Nepido, there's the Myanmar among the different resistance forces, and there's also the Myanmar of the diaspora, which is migrants, refugees, as well as citizens abroad watching with concern and despair. So I think there are these different Myanmars that I think we all need to think about also when we're going to look at, my fourth point and final point, messaging for the future. So how shall we communicate? How shall we coordinate? What do we, what message consistently do we give as an internationally, well, as a regionally coordinated initiative? And I think this is where we can also start thinking maybe creatively. Yes, on paper, of course, all these things are there, the five-point consensus is there, the specifics need to be implemented. But I think we can also start looking at how do we, through our different interlocution channels, also look maybe in the short term at helping build local governance or local administration capacities? There are many efforts going on, homegrown efforts, seeking to provide, fill that gap of administration, and these are in the local areas. This would actually also help build capacities to the longer term for that federal future if we're all interested in helping the Myanmar people towards that, rather than a fragmented future. And that's also where I think can we help beyond humanitarian assistance and the dialogue, bringing people together in dialogue? If there is sensitivities around a political level of dialogue, can we look at functional areas such as helping the Myanmar people prepare for that federal future and start conversations in that? Of course, this is just initial thoughts that perhaps I could benefit very much more from advice from the panelists, but I'll stop here as I do tend to take longer than I should. Thank you.
Not at all, Mammo, that's, that's really helpful, thank you. We'll go back to our panel in turn in the usual order, so I'll start with Minister Travellian.
Thank you. I think some really important challenges there, which is how do we make the engagement effective? And an interesting point raised by June, the question about those new interlocutors, those new economic interlocutors that have come in to the Myanmar space? And are we working closely enough with them as an international community to think about how we can bring to bear the wisdom, which is the power of economics, to sustaining either the wartime economy or indeed more widely the economy which is benefiting some but not all Myanmar citizens across the country? And I think, and of course, Igor, you mentioned it, we do have, all of us as countries, the opportunity to use sanctions as one of our pressure tools. The UK has used our sanctions on human rights violations a number of times in Myanmar. But those are, those tools, the carrot and stick, the opportunities to think about how we can get those countries that do have strong and developing economic activity with parts of the Myanmar system, to ask them to think differently about that relationship, and for us to think about that stick, the sanctions that we can use perhaps in different ways to squeeze where those pressure points can be applied, to reduce the ability of all parties to wage war, to encourage good behaviors rather than bad ones. So we do have tools in the armory. I think the greatest challenge is to bring, from the international community side, us together to be willing to work together to that piece. And that's where, I think, exactly to your point, Mammo, that the ASEAN centrality needs to be where that credible leadership voice comes from. But drawing more parties in to help try and meet those challenges are things important. And certainly, as the UN penholder, we try and do that within the UN framework. And we have before, and you know, we are working on doing again, bringing forward a Security Council resolution, which tries to get as many of those voices as possible to agree to the solution, that peaceful starting point, that put your weapons down starting point to a solution. But we can challenge ourselves and all those who sign up to that, when they do, to say which part can you perhaps play that you haven't been to help with either the carrot or the stick to help drive the right decisions?
Dr. Rajah.
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier on, as I alluded to earlier on, different approaches is not necessarily a bad thing in all situations. I mean, they can give rise to options, they can give rise to creativity. I'll give a very specific example. Some countries do sanctions, do sanction individuals for various reasons, unilaterally, beyond the UN sanctions. In Malaysia, we don't, we can't. We don't have domestic laws to give effect to the unilateral sanctions of other countries, nor to impose our own. But in certain situations, including in the Myanmar context, there may be reasons or unilateral sanctions may give rise to more optimum outcomes. And this is, and this is the reality. So although, let's say, Malaysia has a difference of opinion or approaches when it comes to unilateral sanctions, if you map out everything that's on the table, it is possible that as an international community, that we can move the process in a certain direction. So as I mentioned, you know, we, we should, we shouldn't constrain ourselves in terms of what possible actions which we can take, because in principle, we are against one thing or the other. You know, so as, you can't reduce, in negotiations, you can't reduce things necessarily to first principles, because otherwise, you know, you won't be, you can't move. And I have a fair bit of experience in the multilateral, in the multilateral sphere, only 16 years. But I'll tell you this, generally consensus comes not when people are equally happy, but when people are equally unhappy. You know, so it's, it's very counterintuitive, but, but it may work. But the important thing is, you know, when we, when we say coordination, and this is what I want to emphasize as well, you know, the meaning of words and what we actually imply when you use certain words. You know, unfortunately, coordination is a bit like, as a word, it's a bit like the word interesting. You know, it means everything to all folks, therefore it may mean nothing. So when you say you want to coordinate, what is it that you, what is it that you are coordinating? And we have to be very clear, because when we look at, when we talk about coordination, to me, it means that we have to map out what everyone is doing and see whether, A, there are contradictions, two, whether even if the approaches are different, that we can still make use of those differences in approaches to lead us to a more optimum outcome. So we have to be clear what we mean by coordination. Because certainly, we don't mean by coordination, a uniformity of approach. We're not saying that all countries with special envoys should have a uniform approach to the situation. Obviously, in very many ways, in terms of messaging, et cetera, it would be more optimum to have the same kind of consistent messaging. But it may not be, it may not apply to all situations related to what's happening in Myanmar. So the important thing is, when we talk about coordination, the first thing that we need to do is to look at, is to map out what is on the table and see how we can move this process forward, despite the differences in approaches. So we need to be practical about these things, rather than, you know, to, to fall automatically back on first principles. Because of this, I don't want to talk to this person, that, I don't want to talk to this person. So you're basically constraining ourselves in terms of freedom of action. Thank you.
Ambassador Driesman, did you want to come in on this series of interventions?
Sure, maybe I can pick up on two of them. The first one, your point about one of the, I think, missing links you named it, the uniform message among the opposition. And you alluded to the fact that NUG and K3C have started something different. And I, I think we have to watch that space very carefully because we might see something, historic is a word that's been abused several times, but historic nonetheless with those different actors coming together. Their NUG/K3C statement of the 31st of January was a starting point or another point in a continued process of these actors coming together, defining how they see a possible transition, but ultimately also what a federal democratic Myanmar will look like. Is it an easy process? No, it is not. Is it going to be finished tomorrow? No, it will not. But I think that process is definitely worth one watching and secondly, supporting. On your point on local governance, I frankly couldn't agree more. I think there's a lot of exciting things that are happening in Karenie, in Chin, about local governance taking shape, also in these newly conquered territories, which deserve to be watched, but there too to be supported. And I think for us as EU and for us as international community, it's a challenge because, of course, we want to support these functioning and promising separate sub-national units, but we don't want to support fragmentation. So that's where I think we need to find the balance, but it shouldn't be too difficult. So there are good stories coming from Myanmar, we should just pick on them and support them to the full.
Ambassador Nora.
Just three points. One, of course, I think we are, when we are talking about the efforts by the SAC to reach out to other countries, I think this is again, the importance of strengthening the international unity is very important. I think this is, this is an effort by the SAC, but I don't think this is going to work effectively for them. But I think this is then, an indication perhaps, you know, international community unity, it works in order to put pressure to the junta. On the continuity, consistency, I think this is, this is a challenge that we are facing in ASEAN before. But I think with every summit, the leaders agreeing on a decision, including also the last summit decision on Troyka, I think this is also an effort to really maintain continuity and consistency. ASEAN was criticized because special envoy will be attached to the chair of ASEAN. Of course, we do not want the special envoy to work, start from the scratch. So this is, this is very important. And how to do it on the ground, and that is a challenge. But at least there's, there's a common understanding on common strategy to, to deal with that, you know, in terms of continuity and consistency. The third point, of course, Mammo Tuzar, I think we understand the frustration of the people on the ground. People are talking about regional diplomacy, but for them, how can they stop the killing? How can they stop the suffering? And that is, matters the most for them. And that is the reason why I think we need to continue providing humanitarian assistance. And this is, this is what they feel on the ground, the international community attention. And last year, we are trying to also find an effective strategy to communicate to the people on the ground. I've been engaging with all of the NGO, women, Women NGO Association in Myanmar, telling them what we are trying to do. You know, we've been also talking with the media. This is in our effort, as you mentioned earlier, messaging to the people. This is very important. Of course, when they criticize ASEAN because they are, they keep on suffering. Now, the last point, I think, Piger talked about K3C/NUG, and this is what, who we engage the first when we are starting our chairmanship.
Sorry, Pat Nora, do you want to just, for the generalists in the room who don't follow it as closely as we do, do you want to just mention that the KC3 and the NUG?
Oh, yeah. But you gave me only one minute. No, no, I mean, you know, no, okay. So basically, you could also elaborate later on. But when we see the stakeholders in Myanmar, they are, you know, this is unprecedented as well. There's K3C, which is a coalition between Karenie, Karenie, Kachin, and Chin. They are with the NUG working very closely. They are having conversation with the Northern Alliance, Northern Alliance, again, another EAOs in the north. They are about seven, yeah? About seven Northern Alliance. They are talking to each other, but I don't think they are really seriously talking to each other. And there is also PPST, which is basically in Shan State. We brought PPST and K3C to Indonesia, and the first reaction, Ambassador, we don't want to meet with them in the room. Fine, if you don't want to meet with them, I will provide you with a room. Whenever you would like to meet, you meet, without my presence, without our presence. So then, after a day, they came to us again. Okay, Ambassador, I think we agree to meet each other. I mean, this is again, the PPST is smaller EAOs, but they are talking with the junta a lot more as compared to K3C and also the Northern Alliance. Now, K3C, Northern Alliance, PPST, the military junta, SAC, and now PDF. PDF is working with, this is also unprecedented. You know, because in the past, I think the military is facing the ethnic groups. Now they are facing their own ethnic groups, their children. So this is unprecedented, unprecedented. So this is, I think, to find a figure, a unifying figure, not a leader, at least a figure that can talk with all of those stakeholders is very crucial. And, you know, of course, NUG cannot do that yet. Of course, NLD, the political party of Da'An San Suji, we don't know who is the leadership. There's a leadership inside Myanmar, there's a leadership outside Myanmar, they don't agree to each other, you know? I mean, again, this is to make the situation more complex. So we need a unifying figure, and we need an external partners who could talk to each and every one of them. And it happens to be last year, we could talk to each and every one of them. They are willing, they are very happy to engage with us. But again, you know, in order to move forward, when we are talking about Myanmar-owned, Myanmar-led political solution, there should be a figure within Myanmar who will be able to bridge the differences. Because, and I told them, why don't you start from the easiest subject? Don't start with the most difficult part, immediately collapse. And, and I think the dialogue should take place outside Myanmar. It is impossible to take place in Myanmar, because this has already been happening for 70, 70 years. But how to convince them? We organized in November, last November, we called it proximity talk. Everybody was there in Jakarta. They are sending message through me, they don't need, they don't want to meet each other. Fine, but at least the message is, you know, is delivered, and they understand. This is just like the Jakarta informal meeting. The first meeting, we call it cocktail party. So we don't, we don't oblige them to talk. So they are in the room, for the first time, they see their opponent in person, they are not shooting each other. Fine, you know, you know, just, just, oh, they see each other and they don't need to talk. The second meeting, they see again, but they sit down. The third meeting, they start to have agenda. So this is an example, I'm not saying that this is applicable. But again, there are a lot of examples. Now with the engagement with the military, in the quasi, leading to quasi-democracy, there are a lot of engagement from the military of Myanmar with Indonesian military. They would like to learn how then Indonesian military is willing to have the civilian government. I mean, they don't need to reinvent the wheel, they have laboratory already there. You know, there are a lot. But of course, there are different kind of military people who understand, who are willing, but they are also, that all the years, they are already on the ground. What they know is only, you know, when they see opponent, kill the opponent, that's it. So this is, this is a very challenging situation. But, you know, I think ASEAN is not giving up. But, you know, I think ASEAN is not giving up. And Malaysia next year is not going to give up.
I'm not going to do it, Mike.
You wish, you wish.
We'll go, could I ask the TRICOM staff at the back of the room to run a mic to Liang Waikit? Liang, Waikit, why don't you stand up so they can see you? And we'll take a quick question from Waikit, and then we'll go back to one last round of questions.
And the world is divided and distracted. And also silence could lead to speculation. So I'm wondering whether there's room for more transparency. And on that note, do you think that ASEAN could take the first move by publicly engaging the NUG or maybe ASEAN member states, which could lead to some action from the Myanmar military? Thank you.
That seems very specifically directed at Pak Nora. Do you want to quickly answer that one and then we have time for one more round?
We did that already. I mean, you know, the most important, I mean, this is also one of the, one of the failure that we would like to warn the new special envoy of the UN Secretary General. Don't take a wrong step here because social media is, you know, is very dangerous. I mean, dangerous in sense that it could be utilized in such a way. So at the beginning, of course, confidentiality is very important because they need to ensure they can talk freely, they can talk openly, and they are not going to, you know, be implicated for that. But later on, as what we did before, after a number of engagements, we came to the media. And this is also what we did, engaging with the double I, double S through Aaron in order to communicate to others as well, you know, what we are doing. So this is in fact transparent, but and in last November, for the first time, it was like a test of the water. We issue a joint, we issue our press release about this proximity talk. Immediately reaction is, you know, we see that, you know, they are not yet there.
So I'll take a round of three interventions and I'll start with Sorikanya Tanakthum from Move Forward Party in Thailand. Sorry, can we turn her mic on? There we go. Sorikanya, floor is yours.
Good afternoon, distinguished guest. I'm Sorikanya Tanakthum, House Representative from Thailand. And so Thailand is, you know, one of the most influential neighboring countries of Myanmar, but the current administration seem to be extremely quiet about the situation. So I would have a question for Ambassador Nurah. What is your experience working with Thailand as when Indonesia was ASEAN chair? And what Thailand could do better? Thank you.
And Sorachani Sri Aai, Hamerli.
All right, just kind of trying to keep in the theme of diplomacy here. So in your experience or in your assessment, what have been or what would be the most viable entry points when it comes to, let's say, given the maximal, a minimalist goal of de-escalation in Myanmar? What you think would be the most effective way to get to there, get there? And my other question is, if we're really being realistic and honest here, one of the most efficient or effective intervention here in Myanmar crisis has been efforts, the brokered effort by China. So I just kind of want to hear more about that in term of from like international community sentiments, because as far as I can see, nobody is giving a pat on the shoulder for China, right? So what, what's, you know, what would be kind of the overall sentiment about that? Thank you.
I'll call on one last speaker, Professor Davi Fortuna Anwar. But I did just want to say that the double I, double S invited China to speak on this panel and China declined. But we'd be more than happy to hear from our PLA colleagues that are in the room if they had to comment on China's Myanmar policy. Professor Davi. Can you press speak again and I will turn it on?
Okay, great. Well, thank you. I'd like again to focus on ASEAN and this special envoy. Of course, ideally, myself and a lot of people from civil society and, you know, there's a lot of excitement after the five-point consensus because in the five-point consensus, there was no, there was no mention about an ASEAN chair envoy. You know, we're talking, we talk about ASEAN envoy. So there was an expectation that ASEAN would actually have, not necessarily one, but at least, you know, someone who is going to do it 24/7, who will have the time to get to know the situation on the ground and who will be able also to obtain, to gain the, not just the knowledge, but also the trust of the different groups. But of course, that didn't happen and that boat has passed. And now, and as I, the Troika is probably, you know, the second best. Now, my question is, you know, they say too many cooks do spoil the broth. Indonesia appointed, had an office of special envoy. I'm not sure whether Laos has an office of special envoy and I'm not sure whether Myanmar, Malaysia would have an office of special envoy. My question is, is there an attempt to have a clearinghouse so that ASEAN's good cops, bad cops, strategies, you know, trying to engage and not trying to engage, they do, they do come together and debrief each other and have the same messaging? Because frankly, you know, I do observe ASEAN and, you know, and we are very critical that ASEAN seems to be going in different directions and we are not sure that the different directions are really intentional or they are just there by default. Now, Pak Nurah mentions about the Cambodian crisis. Remember during the Cambodian crisis, ASEAN, under the leadership of Thailand at the time, was very tough on Vietnam. But Indonesia at the time was saw Vietnam as a credible buffer against China, so tended to be softer on Vietnam. So ASEAN, either by virtue or necessity, appointed Indonesia as an interlocutor for the Cambodian conflict. And that's why Indonesia hosted the cocktail parties and the, you know, the Jakarta informal meeting and so on. So ASEAN appointed Indonesia to it. So that developed, it took 13 years, Pak Nurah, remember? You know, 12 years, so between 79 and 1991. So it took a long time and but the same people doing it over and over and again. I don't see that happening. I mean, you can disguise that, you know, it's not mutually exclusive, we can work together, but what is the modality? Is there a kitchen with an ASEAN which works on this 24/7 with the same staff, doing all of the different information and really getting all the messaging across together? That it is intentional when you do the bad cop and good cop policy? And that is one thing. Secondly...
Sorry, Ibu Devi, I'm sorry, we have to conclude in about five minutes, so we're going to have to move on.
Okay, but just the final one thing that, you know, I do hope that the Rohingya issue will be taken up properly because this is a very serious issue. We just met in the Asian dialogue on forced migration. Just noted that last year was the deadliest time after the Andaman Sea Crisis. One in eight people crossing the seas died. And we really hope that, you know, this issue will be taken up as part of the issue when we talk about Myanmar. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for refocusing the conversation on the Rohingya crisis. I think we'll start in reverse order. We only have about, time for about one minute each from our panelists. And I think a number of those questions were for you, Pak Nora. So do you want to begin and answer some of those questions and offer any closing remarks?
Yeah, less than, less than one minute. Of course, Thailand is very important. Now, we are engaging with the government of Thailand, with also stakeholders of Thailand because without the involvement of Thailand, it is going to be difficult for us to also solve this issue. So we have an idea, but then, you know, we see the changing of Foreign Minister again in Thailand, so we have to wait again. So on the, you know, the other question about what will, what can, you know, start to stop the violent conflict? I think what Thailand was trying to do before on the cross-border humanitarian assistance should, could lead to humanitarian pause. But of course, this is not happening yet. So this is, you know, this is one of the idea. And Budewi, certainly, of course, you know, our intention to, you know, intentionally, it's an office of the special envoy, it's an institution. So although we are no longer special envoy, we still have people working in the office and collaborating with their colleague in Laos as well as hopefully later on with Malaysia. So this is an attempt to institutionalize that, you know, finally, there's no consensus on that. Of course, you are talking about diversity, ASEAN is diverse. You have to, you have to accept the fact. So I think, and lastly, on Rohingya, it is quite interesting. I don't know whether everybody knows about this. When we are engaging with the K3C and NUG together, there is always representative from Rohingya. There is a voice of Rohingya there. But of course, not yet accommodated by all of the stakeholders. But at least K3C and, you know, and NUG, for the first time, I think they are engaging, they're participating. On China, when we organized this special envoy meeting in Jakarta, we invited the Chinese special envoy. He cannot come at the same date, at the date of the meeting, but he came later on. But finally, we are also engaging with them. We are talking with the Chinese special envoy. He came two days after. But, you know, we are trying to be transparent also. So to understand what is the intention of ASEAN. Thank you.
Thank you, Pak Nora, and thank you for flying on short notice from Switzerland to be here with us today. Ambassador Driesman.
Okay, just very, very briefly on the minimalist goals of de-escalation, I may be a bit more skeptical of using humanitarian aid to lead to a political process. I think within the political realm, there is things enough that this different sides could do to go towards de-escalation. The release of political prisoners is the most obvious one, but one could also agree on a limited period or also localized of diminished fighting. I think there, there is just a need for a little bit of political will. On the ceasefires brokered by China, I think nobody will deny that China has, as a neighboring country, interests in Myanmar, legitimate interest economically, politically. But I think what we'd like to see, and I mentioned it in my opening statement, is for efforts to be sustainable, they should be inclusive and they should be comprehensive. So partial solutions, partial ceasefires might trigger more distrust in the future and might not be sustainable.
Dr. Rajah.
Thank you. Just to say that I completely agree with Ibu Devi on the importance of ensuring that the Rohingya issue continues to be on the, on the agenda of the international community. That's one. Two is, you know, on the role of China, Thailand, et cetera. In my very limited involvement in this issue, I don't see that, let me put it this way, I see all of them as being positive, it's just that it needs to be channeled in a certain direction, second point. Third point is, I completely agree with, with Pak Nurah. You know, it's a question of consistency, it's a question of determination, it's a consistent, it's a question of being in it for the long haul. So I take very careful note of the Indonesian setup in terms of the Office of the Special Envoy. This is certainly something which we will think very seriously about in Malaysia as well. Thank you very much.
Minister Tavellian.
Thank you so much. And I think just in concluding, a really interesting set of questions, discussions for me, as someone, not a diplomat, a politician who sits in the UK, so a long way from the geography, but where we have a deep commitment to supporting those most vulnerable, in particular the Rohingya, and making sure that their plight is A, not forgotten and B, that they are sustained until such point as there is an opportunity for a solution. But I think the question around quiet diplomacy, is it too quiet? Why can't we hear, why can't you hear your politicians talking about it? Often, it's quite difficult for politicians to be quiet, that's often a challenge for us, but we can be incredibly effective when we do use those powers. Our diplomats will do so much of the day-to-day work, the office, for instance, quietly maintaining those links, making sure that if there is a window of opportunity, that telephone line works in a practical sense, that if you call, someone will pick up the phone. Those are incredibly important. So that quiet, consistent diplomacy is critical to the opportunity to take the crystallizing moment when it might come, when a particular military success proves the opportunity that the other side says, do you know what? Fair enough, we're going to move forwards. So I think that quiet diplomacy is critically important. I think China as a broker is a really important question, again, in that quiet diplomacy space. Don't necessarily ask them to shout about it, but they are fully, you know, tuned in to the issues and the importance of where their, where their inputs can have an impact. I was there a few weeks ago and it's very much an issue on the agenda. But I think that point is the most important, which one? Which is, the likely steps where we move forward is when everybody gets to a point where they're not raging, not fighting really hard, but they're not really happy with the situation. That is the point at which the opportunity arises for, it might be the UN envoy, it might be a random politician, it might be an unexpected historian, it can be the unexpected. That point at which we can all see that moment is what we must all keep our eyes open at all the time. I think that's really important, these incredibly long protracted crises. We see them, as you said, the Cambodian crisis, it did come to an end. Cambodia is thriving and making huge steps forward. We have to all be very aware and awake to that moment when that mutual unhappiness, but not crisis, is the window of opportunity. But I think very importantly, and it's something that we will continue to do as the UK, is to champion the importance of supporting those refugees, whether in-country as IDPs or elsewhere across the region, who need sustaining until such time as that window comes, when all of you as ASEAN leaders will have the opportunity to bring that table of voices together.
Thank you, Minister Tavellian, also for coming to Singapore in the midst of an election campaign in the UK.
It's a pleasure. It's a good thing.
And I just want to thank in particular the Myanmar people who are around the table who participated in discussion. We really appreciate you coming here and enlivening this discussion with your perspectives in particular. The double I, double S will continue to try to shine a light on what is happening in Myanmar through our Myanmar Conflict Map on the double I, double S website, and then also through our convening work going forward. So we hope to see you again and hopefully, eventually, at some point, even if it takes years, these meetings won't be necessary and we'll be talking about Myanmar's future in a more positive light. So thank you very much for coming. Thank all of you, and please thank our panelists for joining us.